Howdy, everyone. Good evening. Today's Tuesday, March 28th, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of our executive session, I will come back out and open work session and invite the public to attend at that point. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:42 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we are moving into work session. The public is invited to join us in the first-floor conference room. All right, guys. We've still got some items on our work session. Good evening. The time is 6:44 PM. We're in work session of Capella City Council. Item A is discussion of the agenda items. I will...Item number nine has been withdrawn, so we will not be having that one. No Starbucks. Not yet. All right. You will read that into the record for us, all right? Bob is going to read our executive action into the record for us at the end of the meeting. Is there any other comments on our agenda denied? Kevin?
Number 10.
Number 10. That is still a go. It's going to be...We're going to ask for it to be continued to the next meeting on April the 11th.
Excellent. Thanks, sir.
Sorry, I didn't... Number 10.
They requested... Oh, it's their request.
All right. So then, we'll come back. Moving on to...So, Don?
Well, so continuing number 10, does that mean we open the public hearing and then just leave it open?
Yes.
To a date certain.
And we'll discuss next...
This be continued to a date certain or after we average it?
Got it. I got it.
So, when you make the motion...
We won't really have any discussion about it, so...
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Got it.
So we just need to...After we open it, make a motion to continue?
Yes.
And we're good?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, now, in my notes, it said that we're going to have presentation by staff. We'll do that next time? Okay. So we'll just open it and continue it and move on. Any other comments on agenda? On item B, it's not critical that we discuss the mayor pro temp tonight. We've got a fairly full...We've got several other things I'd rather us cover. Let's skip over item B, and if we have time, we can come back to it. Item C, discussion regarding the stream bank restoration loan program. Mr. Collins.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to provide an update on a program that we initially discussed under the ARPA funding. But I wanted to share with you or begin with the why or revisit the why around this program. Council and staff for years have wanted to find a way to help residents that live along streams that have stream bank erosion problems. And we believe that this revolving loan program is a way to do that that still allows those property owners to pay for the improvements, to pay for the repairs, but gives them a vehicle to access funds in the event that maybe they struggle in getting funds or finding funds to do those types of improvements. So it would support the city's goals of maintaining conveyance in the streams while helping the private property owners maintain or repair the stream bank. And just as a reminder, for most of the streams in Capella, the property line, the private property line goes to center of the creek. So that stream bank is the property owners to maintain. So that's the background on the why of the program. So just quick revisiting the stream maintenance policy. Again, the private property line goes to the center of the creek, but the city is responsible for maintaining the conveyance of the stream, right? Making sure the water can flow down the stream. So in that endeavor, right, we maintain things within the stream itself. So we maintain what's in the stream, and then the private property owners are responsible for maintaining the stream banks themselves. And the genesis of this idea came about when we had the ARPA funds and determined in looking at the rules that a revolving loan was an eligible use of ARPA funds. Now, as we went back and looked at the final details of the rules, that was still true, except that that revolving loan would basically end at the end of 2026. So it's revolving, but it wouldn't last into perpetuity, which was the original idea. Again, the idea is, as folks repay their loans, those funds go back into this fund and rebuild that fund, and we can use it on future projects in the future. So knowing that the ARPA funds would have to be repaid at the end of 2026, we're now proposing that we use ARPA funds for other drainage projects and use...We have a drainage utility district, so some of the projects that we're planning or are using DUD funds for now, we would use those funds to cede this revolving loan program. So that's the proposal.
And I did try to contact our representative to see if she might be willing to intercede on our behalf to get the loan program extended, and it was pretty clear during the conference that she was on that there's very little appetite in the House of Representatives at this point to do that. So that was kind of our last ditch effort at saving the revolving loan program.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I think it was a worthy effort to try, see if we could get the rules adjusted a little bit. You know, not surprising, they were not willing to go down that path. So that's our proposal. We do have a source of funds that the stream bank revolving loan would be an eligible use for DUD funds. Because it's repaid and because it helps us in our endeavor to maintain conveyance in the stream, it's an eligible DUD fund use. And so we see this being rolled out in phases. The first phase, if you recall, 2015, the area of Denton Creek was hit really hard by those floods and the releases from Grapevine Creek. And so what we'd like to do is start in Phase 1, really focus on the properties along Denton And then, once we kind of...I mean, we're going to advertise to those homes and work with them to try to get the program up and running. I'm sure we'll learn some things as we get into this Phase 1, and then we can come back to council before we open it up to other streams and other property owners and kind of relay, okay, we learned this, learned that, we're going to tweak this, tweak that. And so that's our proposed scope for Phase 1. And the details around that loan program, if you'll recall, we had identified $750,000 for this revolving loan program, and we proposed to keep that dollar amount in the program. And so essentially, what would happen is a property owner who...And we would suggest or propose that this would be eligible for any existing or future projects. Give folks the opportunity, if they've already started into the...down this path, give them the opportunity to access this program. So a property owner would come to us. We have an agreement that we've developed with Mr. Hager, so it would be an administrative process. They'd come to us. They would need to get a permit, so they'd have to get design. They'd have to get a floodplain development permit, just like any of these projects would. So we would review those plans, you know, to make sure that an engineer has sealed them and signed them. They'd get a permit from the city, and then we would start administering the funds, partnership between engineering and our strategic finances engagement group, SFE group. So administer those funds. We're thinking a 10-year term, so a 10-year payback period. If the homeowner has more than 20% invested in the project of their own money, we would apply an interest rate of 1%. If they have less than 20% of the project cost of their cash money, then we would...then the interest rate would be 2%. And I can give you some examples of what those payments would look like based on different values of projects, you know. But the idea is, let's just say we are able to, I don't know, administer $750,000 in the first year. Well, within that first year of payback, we would get enough money back to actually do another project. So assuming it's a $50,000 project, within about nine or 10 months, we would have $50,000 paid back on that first distribution. And again, you know, and another $50,000 after another nine or 10 months. So that's the way we envision this working, is that as these projects pay back, that we would then get the money and be able to reinvest and have it available for other projects. You know, hopefully, at some point, we run out of these projects, and we can talk about dissolving the program, but we're made whole as we go along, right? So talked about interest rates, talked about the term. One of the keys in terms of risk management, and I've talked about staff's involvement, reviewing plans, things like that, we will get a lien on the property as part of the agreement, so that if someone builds the project and sells the property, then we're able to get our funds at closing, right? Or they could resolve the lien before closing, so that way we don't lose it when someone changes or the property changes hand. Talked a lot, quite a bit about the city's involvement, administration. Again, we will be out there. We'll be watching to make sure it's being built according to the plans. You know, I won't say there's no risk, but it is...This would be a vehicle for the property owners that are just having challenges getting these projects going. The other thing we have done, and we've got a draft of it, is we've put together a toolkit for projects like this for homeowners to use, and it kind of walks through, okay, these are some of the things to consider when you're looking for a contractor. These are the types of stream bank restoration projects that we've seen in Capella that have been successful. And we've got a list of contractors that have done this kind of work in Capella. And we don't endorse them. We just provide the names and say, you know, you're going to need to do your own research, but these are folks who have done these types of projects in Capella. So what we're looking for, what we're requesting tonight in terms of feedback from council, A, do you like the proposal or are you okay with the proposal to use DUD funds to fund it and then move the ARPA funds into drainage projects that we were already planning to do? And then just the basic direction to move forward with the program in general. In terms of next steps, if we get direction to move forward, you would see the budget amendment in our...The next time we do a budget amendment, you'd see those DUD funds moved over into a specific line item or fund for this purpose. So for tracking purposes, it would come out of and back into for tracking. So with that, I will close and...
Actually, you've got some questions.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, mayor. Thanks, Kent, for the update. When did council approve this loan program?
You haven't.
What you approved was the use of ARPA funds for this project, but you haven't approved the loan program. That's why we're here tonight. And if you say move forward with it, it's really becomes an administrative...You'll see the budget amendment, and so you would see that in the next time Kim comes, Ms. Tean comes forward with a budget amendment. But beyond that, it's really an administrative process, agreement between the city and the property owners and administering the program.
Kevin?
Two quick questions about maybe two potential scenarios. So let's say that the program's wildly popular, and, you know, we...I know you talked about, like, going through that $750,000. First year comes through, you get another 50-ish K or whatever, so we can start funding. Assuming there's a waitlist or something like that, would we prioritize first come, first served, or would it be severity of property? I just didn't know if you had any thoughts about that?
We had...
And if you have it, that's fine.
The thought was first come, first served.
Okay.
But, you know, that would be a lesson learned as we go along. Okay, we've got a, you know, we've got a $30,000 project sitting here and needs the funds, but that if...We'll cross that bridge if we get there.
And I guess we have the option to allocate more funds if it is wildly popular.
That is...Yes, that would be...We would come back to you for that.
Second thing is, let's say that it's a...Excuse the pun, a DUD program, and if you like that, I'm here for you guys. So let's say that the program kind of falls flat on its face. Let's say that we have one person that maybe takes a step on it, and then we've got crickets on the program for a while. Is there a recommended timeframe of when you may come to us and say, we're really not seeing the traction on this program? You know, we've got one person. Obviously, we promised them 10 years to pay back. Could we, I'm assuming, just de-allocate those funds? Just keep that one person on tap and then dissolve it from there?
It would still be...Those funds would still be within the DUD, so they would still be eligible for those types of projects if we decided...Council decided to shrink the program or stop it. But I think with...Once we get through kind of Phase 1 and get to a point where those properties have been addressed, I think we'll learn some lessons and be able to come back to council and give you kind of an update and recommendation moving forward.
Thank you for indulging my bad humor and not even asking questions. So thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, so I'm aware of some people who've undertaken some recent destruction and have taken out home equity lines of credit at a high rate. Can we make this program eligible to do refis?
So we recommend that the...Any project that's existing or proposed would be eligible for these funds.
Okay. And then, of course, in the case of bankruptcy...
And I will say, on the refi part, that's going to be on their side on how to deal with that. We wouldn't be in...And we'll have...I mean, some of these are going to be...We just need to sit down and have a conversation with them and try to figure out how to make the details work, as long as the project fits within our guidance and our vision for the program.
Kent, you want to touch on, we talked about all of this and put all this together. One of the things is, we're not paying all the freight. This is kind of a match. You know, we're going to help them finance, because you still have to do attribution. You know, you've heard him talk about...I've told you for years that he's been public money in private property. So what he's done is made some determination of attribution and what the public benefit is for me to use the money. So that's why we're 750, and we're going to try to spread that out. We're going to do some matching, bridge gaps for people, assist people, because they're still improving their property. So...But this is a way to help stretch their money. A lot of people said, you know, I'm close, but I can't afford $100,000 loan. I can't fix the wall or fix my property and my...our neighbors, because you have to tie in and all that. So they get a loan together. We can help them bridge that gap, make that payment, because, you know, we're not a bank. We think that it's a good thing to encourage people that we can give them some financial relief and to assist them, because there is a public benefit being derived.
And I do want to clarify, because words do matter. When I say existing, what I meant by is an in-progress construction project. So it's an existing project, not an existing wall. So I just want to clarify what I meant by existing. It's an in-progress project. That's what we would recommend. So anything in progress or future would be eligible.
You want to make sure we're not refinancing their house, but the improvement.
Right, right.
And then, of course, many of you guys have discussed the topic of bankruptcies, where we stand in line behind...
I can answer that. We're at the bottom of the food chain.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you've got to purchase money, mortgage security that you've got. If they got the loan, there's probably a lien there from a financial institution, and they're going to require us to sign a subrogation. That's just fact and matter. They've got more money and more skin in the game, and so they've got higher risk.
Are we behind HOA? Assuming it isn't one?
Hopefully not. It all depends when it's fine.
Okay. Thank you. John?
That's the risk. Do we have some risk? Do we understand?
Kent, speaking specifically for the Parker, that Denton Creek area, I'm trying to recall, what was the projected cost to fix those...I forgot how many houses?
There's six houses that are already in progress. And our...Well, we were told the estimate's around $300,000, so on average, about $50,000 per property.
Okay. So right now, there's some things going on there, so they actually took on themselves and it's actually going on?
It is.
Okay. Because I saw that it was...They dug up quite a bit.
Right.
So they do have the funding at this point that they are...
Yes. The project's moving forward. I don't know all the details on the funding.
One of the things that Kent and I found out when we got involved in this, that solutions are multifamily. You know, for the walls to be successful, like five families that are contiguous, we need to do this together, because it's cheaper.
Sure.
To put in one wall once than six walls, and then they have to tie in to that. So if it's engineered properly...So that's another reason we're trying to encourage to have this money available to help people bridge that. You know, one homeowner may be more flush, you know.
Well, and that's the question I would ask. It seems like it was dug up quite a bit covering all the houses that are affected. So are the all the houses that are affected, are they all in at this point?
In that stretch, yes, they are. Yeah, there's six houses. And I, you know, I don't know all the details, but from what I understand, each property owner had to kind of figure out their own way to find their funding part, probably some is more attractive than others. And so I think this loan program would help all of them and give them a little...Yeah, it would be helpful to any of them.
Instead of taking all second mortgage on their own home, they could come to us and bridge the gap, so that they could put some maybe a little savings in all of our...
At this point, they've already gotten the loan, isn't it? Or because the project is already going forward?
It is.
So all we're doing is maybe offering them lower than true pay. Is that basically what we're doing?
Potentially, yeah.
Because we think if we treat people kindly, that it'll encourage other people to fix theirs, too. Where before, you know, the first guy always steps out there and does things, and so we helped the first guy. Say, we helped him, because I don't want to penalize him for having more than his neighbor. The idea is to get the bank fixed and some of that.
And it just kind of made me one thing, because I thought they didn't have the funding at the point, or they couldn't get the loans, and that's why it wasn't moving forward, and that's why it came to...
For the longest time since 2015, that's true. That has been true.
And then, but...
I don't know what's changed.
Raise values.
Yeah, I know, we've had conversations with these families, I don't know, starting...
2015.
Yeah, but even specifically about, you know, what...Because they came in just kind of asking for some technical guidance. Hey, we're, you know, we're trying to put these families together to do a larger project, but we don't really even know where to start. So we just sat down and had a conversation with them, and we told them, we're working on a kind of this toolkit. And oh, that would be great, you know, that would be very helpful, because they don't know how to find the contractor, how to, you know, judge whether it's a good contractor, those kinds of things. So it's just kind of a technical conversation about how to do a project like this. So I know that was probably two, two and a half years ago that we had that conversation. So they've been thinking about it for a while, and then now gotten to a point where I guess they all identified funds. I will say one thing, you know, the values of some of these properties are hurt by the deterioration of the banks. Restoring these banks restores the property value, you know, so there's a community benefit there.
Okay. Mark?
This may be more of a question for Bob. So any typical loan, you're going to do a credit check. Are we allowed to do a credit check on them?
We're not planning on doing it. I know you're not planning, but are we allowed to?
I would have to look at that.
I mean, because I would like to know if they're current with their lender and their HOA dues, because if they're behind several months, then there's, you know, we're maybe lending money to someone...
That's why I don't want us to be the sole financing tool. That's what he and I talked about. We would hope that they would gun to a bank, a financial institution, and they're putting skin in the game, because if they're not putting any skin in the game, that changes the risk.
Right.
And so what we're looking to is to help people help themselves, where before, we couldn't, we didn't have a way to provide that. Now that we have the DUD money and the DUD funding, and that we derive a benefit, if someone comes to us and wants us to pay for the whole wall, I'm going to tell him, we probably shouldn't do that, because we're not receiving 100% of the benefit. Now I'm just improving someone's personal property with public money.
Did you?
Well, I just want to follow. Do we...What have you just described? Do we have this in documented in papers?
Yeah, we've created some that pay for. We're just not done, because we didn't want to spend our money. We've been buying time, working on something.
What's the industry that we are going to offer?
2% if they have more than 20% of the value of the improvement that they're putting in, and 1%...Sorry, I got that backwards. 1% if they have more than 20% invested in the project, 2% if they have less than 20%.
So when can we get this documented review?
Well, we're working with Mr. Hager on the agreement.
And it'll be finished unless you tell us you want us to go forward. Don?
You think the average cost is about $50,000? Is that just what you're estimating? I mean, I know it could vary, but...
Well, in this particular project's $50,000. You know, it really depends on the severity of the damage, the length, you know, or the width of the lot. But it, yeah, it'll...In our...We're guessing it's going to be in that $50,000 to $100,000 range typically.
And I'm assuming, okay, so if they...If we follow in, they sell the house, there's not enough equity to pay first lien plus us, I assume we just, at that point, we just write off whatever we can collect? Is that...I mean, there's not...
I mean, it's still a personal liability for...
They do, but that's what I'm wondering, is that do we go...I mean, are we going attach ourselves to them somehow, you know, when they move off or whatever? I'm just curious how we're... I'm just curious how we're looking to approach that.
Yeah, you have to file suit against them. And once the house comes up for sale, then that would be our trigger, say, when you pay them. Or you may, you know, we, I, they're asking you, you got to file suit.
Well, that's, yeah, that, that gets tricky too also, to follow somebody. But also, if they have a project, are we going to, are we paying them or are we going to fund the contractor?
Funding.
Fund, fund the contractor? Okay.
That's what he and I talked about. It, it would act as a jury quest. They bring us the jury quest that's signed off by their engineer, architect, and repair percentage.
Do we, are we approving the project? I guess with a permitting, right? So they're getting permitting. But that, that's going to be the approval process for the project, so.
Yeah, and the contract would be between the homeowner and the contractor.
Going back to your point about having skin in the game, both of y'all made the comment, I guess I might even think, do we, do we need to just say, you come up with a project and it's X dollars, we're just, we'll, we'll fund eighty percent of it, maybe we just need to go into it that way? Or is there any reason not to do that? To make sure they do have some level of skin in the game? Just go ahead and say, we'll fund eighty percent of it? Or up to eighty percent?
Well, the idea is to spread the money out for them to undertake, because I don't want to be bank.
Sure.
I, I, I'm willing to allow it to be a participant because we receive a benefit.
Sure.
But I really shouldn't pay for a hundred percent of the wall for someone because now I'm just improving aesthetically the property value and it's not helping the community. They need to share in that. Because I'm allowing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm saying instead of, don't allow them, make them put in at least twenty percent.
We can do that.
I mean, that's a suggestion if we're concerned about that.
I have a thing they would put in more.
Or whatever, whatever the number is, just require that.
Kent, at this point, all those six houses, they're all in, right?
Yes, they're not. Well, they're all in.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about like with the project currently that's going on right now.
Right, they're, yes, they're all, they're all participating if that's.
Right, they're all, so they all have a loan at least.
They do.
At this point.
But, well, it's, yeah, something.
But at least they have something in it.
The project is funded, you know, as far as we know, and they're moving forward with it.
So the question is, are you guys okay with Kent continuing on? I got to be honest, this is one of the most difficult requests that we ever had come from citizens because it was heartbreaking that we literally couldn't do anything to help them. And I'm just ecstatic that we've been able to work our way to be able to benefit some of our citizens. Mark?
Well, to your point, I mean, do we set the limit at twenty? And, or do we say it's either twenty percent and you get a one percent loan, or ten percent and you get a two percent loan? There is no in-between? Or just set it at twenty?
That simplifies it for us, to be honest with you.
It's simple, but it's not as simple as anything just because of the attribution part of it. I've got to make sure that we are constitutionally comfortable of not providing public money solely for private benefit. And it varies on where it is, how much erosion, what the conveyance is. It's one creek in this case, right now, it's Dent Creek.
Well, I think, but I think having, requiring the homeowner or the property owner to have either eighty or, eighty or ninety percent skin in the game provides, it simplifies the calculation for us. We say eighty, you know, if you're, if you're, sorry, I've done that twice. Yeah, right. We either have eighty or ninety percent of the cost, or the loan. I mean, again, this is a revolving loan, so.
It's a repayable grant.
No, it's a, it's, it's.
It's a repayable grant.
What did the lawyer say?
Well, I mean, if it has administrative property.
All right. God, we're kind of down in the weeds here a little bit?
Yeah.
I, I, well, it is, but.
Kent's explaining to you how it operates, okay? And I'm putting it in common parlance, I don't even get in there in those words, but it's in effect a loan type program that's replenishing that fund. It's not for profit. It's just recover costs and keep the fund flush so that we can help as many people as possible.
John?
Well, before they actually took on the project themselves, I think we all agreed that with the funding that we have, if we were able to assist them one way or another, that we wanted to do that. And that's what we were actually looking into, right? Talking to the homeowners and see if they're interested and so on. So at this point, I mean, if we could help, help out, like you were saying, that partially benefits the city as well, not just the homeowners, then I don't see why we would back out all of a sudden when they've actually had some, they were already invested into making that, you know, repairing that creek.
You know, and I, I think you're, you're, you're concerned about the dams of water, but there were a couple of these homes that are getting close to the, the banks being eroded so much that they were going to condemn the houses. So then we wouldn't have that tax coming in on those houses. So it kind of helps us, helps ourselves if we do that.
Sorry, one more. So one of the houses, it seems like they're going, they're being up for sale.
I don't know. I haven't been out.
There is one of them up for sale.
Yeah, so what?
And I'm not surprised. I mean, quite honestly, I mean, you know, if you've been living under that and you want to make the improvement and sell your house, I mean, you restore the value, sell the house, repay all those loans, you're probably tired of the creek at this point.
So if they have a loan to, and they're actually selling it, I guess you got to work on these a lot, yeah?
It'll be different for every home.
Yeah, but yeah. And they don't have to take it either.
Yeah, yeah, right. Again, we were four before and I'm four.
Everybody thumbs up?
Yeah, thumbs up?
All right.
Cliff?
Yeah? Your Caesar is over there. Okay, just to summarize, we're going to move forward. We're going to do the eighty, ninety in the agreement and that'll, that'll determine the.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent, ninety percent contribution. And that'll help us, just clarify, you know, you get this interest rate if you're, if you put twenty percent in this rate, if you get ten percent in satisfies their contribution requirement, so.
I'm confused. We're putting eighty percent in?
No, no, no. They are. No, we are. No, we are.
Huh?
The city, the city would be putting eighty to ninety percent.
Oh, that's right, yes. They're ten or twenty, sorry, yes, right.
Right. Kent's just got nothing.
You seem concerned about this.
Yeah, that's more than I, are we, how much benefit are we typically receiving in the conveyance of the construction?
We'll come back later.
That's what needs to be constitutionally met. Because otherwise you're just improving. I understand the argument, where you can make that argument on every piece of property in town.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on that offline. Yeah. Thank you all for the direction. Appreciate it.
What the hell is we need to do?
Thank you.
Pre-CS questions.
What's that?
Pre-CS questions.
Eligibility, is that only for new projects or is that for projects that are in progress and new projects?
Yes.
In progress.
In progress and.
Right, because that was all.
I think, John, if I, I'm going to maybe put words in your mouth. You were concerned what would happen if the ones that are currently in progress got completed before this was implemented, would those people be eligible?
Yeah.
I didn't, okay, and?
Yes.
The answer's yes.
Yes, the answer's yes.
We started this project longer before they started contracting.
All right. We're going to, we're going to come back for item D. I don't think we're going to have time to hear that in seven minutes. And Mr. Land is going to give us a very brief, very brief legislative update.
Yesterday was a long day. Senate Bill 612 and House Bill 640 are the street sales and use tax for maintenance purposes. The request is to go from their, change the language to go from their four-year term to a ten-year election term, at least have that option. The mayor spoke on HB 640 yesterday. That's House Ways and Committee, House Ways and Means Committee. And what started at 10 o'clock, he didn't speak till early noon. The Senate Bill 612 started at 11 o'clock and it came up at noon as well. So we had split the difference and the mayor stayed with the House bill as I went over to the Senate. And so both were heard and what happens is they closed the public hearing and it's left pending. So on the Senate side, it was actually voted out of the Senate Local Government Committee, which is Senator Benton Court's committee today. So now that means it goes forward towards the Senate floor for votes. It came out of the Senate the previous two times, where it got stopped was on the House side. And so what we're doing is we're working with various folks to help convince Chairman Meyer to go ahead and put it on for a committee vote so that it'll come out of the committee as well. So that is the status. On the various sales tax bills, they're all sitting, nothing's happening with them. No matter what your opinion is towards, I mean, I know what ours is, but their opinion towards sourcing, the, all the bills that are related to sales tax are sitting back. The last thing that heard today was, and y'all saw in one of the reports, and you heard Lieutenant Patrick make this comment, basically he has said that no bill out of the House will get passed in the Senate until they pass the Senate's property tax and budget bill. So there'll probably be a special session. Because he's drawing the line in the sand.
A little bit of background on the, on the House bill. The chairman of the committee, Morgan Meyer, is playing some politics with the author of our bill, which is our representative, Julie Johnson. He's trying to pressure her for a vote that she wouldn't normally give to give this one the, the grounds to move forward. And, huh? And then, and there's all sorts of these dependencies on who owes who what. So it's, it's, it gets very convoluted down in Austin.
That's something that's what happened.
And that was the end of our report. We are expecting to be called back down. Oh, by the way, we had two days' notice that this was being heard on Monday, so it was.
So Kent drove.
And I slept.
It was a long day.
Very long.
And you, you talked for two minutes and you don't really know what good you did, except you know that you needed to do it.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, we will come back for the future median designs at the end of our regular session.
Thank you for the report, Kent.
The time is 7:24. We are recessed from work session. We'll move into the City Council at 7:30. We are waiting for a quorum. Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:33 PM. We're going to move into the regular session of the Coppell City Council. As a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list your address. Tonight, for our invocation, we have Reverend Beth Kellner from the First United Methodist Church here in Coppell to give the invocation. And then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing.
Merciful God, creating God, gather here this night. We are surrounded by so many of your blessings. Again, we celebrate the blessings of this day, the blessings that we are able to gather in this place. We are also reminded that we still live in a world that is, oh, surrounded by so much pain and violence. And so in this moment, let us remember those who have been impacted most recently, those who lost their lives in a, in a senseless act of violence at a school. Lord, we ask your blessings upon this council, upon the, the decisions they will make as they continue to work to make this a, oh, not just a wonderful place to live and to work, but a safe place where we can continue to gather, secure in your love and your blessings. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Item six is a proclamation. I'd like to invite Ms. Prince and her delegation to come forward and any members of our Interfaith Alliance to also come join me. Counsel for your consideration. Whereas throughout the history of our great nation, the principles of our founding fathers, including Christianity, are one of the building blocks of American society. And whereas Christianity recognizes that faith is an important part of a community's spiritual, moral, and social growth, and whereas the Christian faith celebrates Easter hope and reminds people around the world of the presence of a faithful God who offers unconditional love, and whereas Jesus Christ teaches, love your Lord, your God. unconditional love, and whereas Jesus Christ teaches, "Love your Lord, your God, with all your heart, all your soul, and all your mind, and all your strength," and his second teaching is, "Love your neighbor as yourself." And whereas the citizens of Capel have a rich history of volunteerism and service to one another, as well as to those outside of our community, and whereas citizens of Capel humbly contribute their time, their resources, and their witness to bring relief to those in need within Capel and the surrounding communities, and whereas Christianity believes that God created nations throughout the earth and made humans to live in this world in peace and joy, and to act as guardians of His creation, His Son, Jesus Christ, continues to inspire people around the world and give hope and confidence to His followers. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do proclaim the month of April 2023 as Christian Family Month in the City of Capel, and call upon all citizens to rejoice in the contributions of the Christian community. It witnessed thereof, set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed as 20th day of March 2023. Counsel. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a proclamation designating the month of April as Christian Family Month.
And I have a, a second from Councilmember Hinaosa Smith. All in favor?
Long Hinaosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Counsel, does anybody have any comments? Should've asked for that before the vote. Councilmember Hinaosa Smith.
I just wanted to thank all of y'all for being here this evening and for recognizing Christian Family Month. I think that's very important. And so, again, really appreciate your participation and your appearance here. Thank you for being here.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what Councilmember Hinaosa Smith has said. And I also want to say thank you, Ms. Prince, for, Carmen Prince, for initiating, initiating this and getting everyone together. And again, thank you for your continued support and the contribution to the City of Capel.
And I'd like to thank this group for contributing to the interfaith allegiance group in Capel. Like I said in the proclamation, it is a very part of our, very big part of our community, and we welcome all to attend. So thank you very much. Did you have something you would like to say?
Just a few words. Hi, my name is Carmen Prince. Throughout the history of our great nation and the principles of our founding fathers, the Christian family has been the building block of American society. This continues to be true today. Thus, we have called upon responsible citizens and officers of government to promote those measures designed to maintain and strengthen the Christian family as the fundamental unity of society. For that action of supporting and promoting the Christian family unit, we citizens of Capel would like to give thanks to Mayor Mays and all the members of the City Council for accepting the proclamation, which recognizes and celebrates April as Christian Family Month in Capel. Thank you, and God bless you all.
This, this is hard to do two-handed, so we're going to put that there, and I'll shake your hand that way. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item number seven is our citizens' appearance. Tonight, we also have a public hearing that is going to be separate from the citizens' appearance and will be heard as a part of the regular agenda item, which incidentally will be delayed or deferred till our next meeting. But persons wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance must sign the rest, register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each, and individual speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the City Council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. We did have one person signed up to speak tonight, and that's Ms. Barbara Bailey. Ms. Bailey? Oh, I'm sorry, there was another little section. Come on down, there was another section on the second page.
If you have something you need to do.
No, well, just, once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and break and make the request of us if we would like to extend, extend your time. So please come forward.
Okay, I am back about the return curbs.
Name and address.
Oh, yeah. Barbara Bailey, 232 Plantation. I sort of figured y'all, I knew that. Okay. When I talked to the Assistant City Manager about the petitions asking for the city not to have the return curbs or the traffic islands, and it's hard to see the path of travel, the way the sidewalks are made along Plantation and other parts of the city, I asked why the city didn't care about the residents, since we thought it was dangerous, as, and that they were trip hazards. I was told that, because I turned in petitions with many signatures, and I was told that in response, that we care about all the people. So it appears that all the people, at least to us, does not include the residents and the taxpayers, and the "we" because it was, the new assistant manager said that "we" care about all the people. I'm assuming that means the city, or the city management, or something like that. But that's a royal "we." I mean, people that live here should have more something to say unless what we're saying is, like, wrong. And I have turned in multiple documents to y'all showing that other cities and states consider these to be trip hazards, and nobody I've found puts traffic islands on sidewalks. I haven't found anybody that does that. And it's, I just really feel that you all should listen to the people, that what Tech dot PED18 says, what y'all, what they put in, it's not even on there. Doesn't exist on there. So I don't understand why the city cannot fix this and follow what, put the flare sides on, fix the path of travel if you would. Like, just coming over here, I watched the guys go into the Y, and nobody turns the corner and goes. They just cut straight across where the sidewalk should, should be. I'm just saying that, like, 11 seconds. Anyway, those traffic islands are like what you have over in, in front of the 7-Eleven and Denton Tap and Sandy Lake. They don't belong on a sidewalk. You cannot traverse them. I know, here's my clock. And with, and the city, I've asked them for a study that shows that there's something great about those, haven't gotten anything back. And I've turned in multiple documents to the opposite. Thank you, Beth, very much.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are scrolling on the screen. Counsel, is there any thing that needs to be pulled from the agenda, from the consent? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a consent agenda items eight A through E.
Second by Councilmember Carroll. All in favor?
Long Hinaosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Any person wishing to appear at our public hearing tonight and held by the council pursuant to any official notice shall sign a register and list his or her address provided by the city secretary outside the council chamber, indicating the item on the agenda the person wishes to address. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes, and there shall be a cumulative limit of 60 minutes for all those speaking on an, an agenda item, a like limit for all those speaking against an item on the agenda. No group or organization shall be allowed more than three speakers on any agenda item. These limitations may be extended at the digression of a majority of the council members present. Item number nine was to be a public hearing, but it has been pulled at the request of the applicant, so we will move on to number 10. It is a public hearing, so I open the public hearing and would like Ms. Perone Oswald to read it into the record for me.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Public hearing number 10, consider approval of PD 295 R2-HC Popeye's Chicken Restaurant, zoning change request from PD 295-HC to PD 295 R2-HC, to approve a detailed site plan for Popeye's Chicken Sit Down slash Drive Thru Restaurant on 0.97 acres of property located at the south side of State Highway 121 between Freeport Parkway and Northwestern Drive to southwest of the proposed, now withdrawn Starbucks, at the request of Archway 121 Capel Limited, being represented by Clay Christie of Claymore Engineering. So I really don't have anything to present to you this evening, because this item has been asked to, been tabled to the April 11th meeting date. Since the Starbucks has withdrawn their item, these two locations were side by side, and they had worked out, I guess, certain things to do together. So now the applicant is looking to see where they stand, and will be hoping to come back to April 11th.
All right. Thank you very much. So since we had no one signed up to speak at our public hearing, it's fairly simple. Kevin, Councilmember Neves has a motion to make.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to continue the public hearing to April 11th. 2023.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councilmember Carroll's second. All in favor?
Long Hinaosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is our city manager reports.
Mayor and Council, just a few things to report. On April the 4th at 11:00 AM, the ribbon-cutting ceremony will take place at the Cricket Pitch by Wagon Wheel Field Number 6. So that's next Tuesday, April 4th at 11:00 AM. The Moore Road Boardwalk Construction Project is making progress. The pond has been de-watered, and the wildlife has been relocated. South Belt Line, hopefully people are still not traveling South Belt Line as much, continue, they continue to pour concrete. The panel replacements on East Sandy Lake Road are beginning this week. Basically, they're working between MacArthur and Denton Tap. As they work west, when they finish, then they'll start working east, so they'll be working on both sides. And then on April 25th, we will have a presentation related to the sidewalks ADA access and be able to give you a report, which is what was being addressed during the citizens' comments tonight. So that's going to be on April 25th.
Thank you very much. Does our speaker tonight know that? Has she been informed?
I, I do not know.
Could we see that she does know?
We will.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 is Mayor and Council reports. Are you interested in the future of Old Town Capel? Please join us, the council, on March 30th at 6:00 PM at the Senior Community Center at 345 West Bethel Road to take part in a conversation about the next steps for Old Town. Don't miss the opportunity to share your ideas and your feedback with the, the city leadership. And also, in April of each, each year, the city holds a series of town hall meetings for the public. Our staff presents their current projects and major projects planned for the upcoming fiscal year. During these town halls, residents are encouraged to ask questions and provide feedback on things that they would like to have the city include in, in our budget. Join us for the budget town hall scheduled for April 6th in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. And are you ready to vote in the upcoming May 6 local election? Make sure you register by April 6th, and information on how to register to vote can be found at votetexas.gov. All right. Item number 13 is council reports concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Item A is a report on the North Central Texas Council of Governments. Councilmember Brianna Hinaosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. The last meeting that we had for the North Central Texas Council of Governments, the big focus of discussion had to do with the fact that from 2016 to 2020, the 12-county area experienced 3,752 fatalities and 19,405 serious injuries on its roadways. So there was a, a big discussion about a regional roadway safety plan, including the analysis and creating a, looking to see how they could decrease fatalities and serious injuries over time, and their goal is aiming at having, like, zero fatalities by 2050. And so there's a lot of discussion around the analysis of where are areas that are of concern, where can they, you know, create different infrastructure, what can they do to create safer roadways? And the fact is that they looked at 2020, right after that, then there wasn't much traffic, and now everyone's back out and about, and how can we decrease that? So that was a big topic, a topic of discussion. They also mentioned that the transportation issues continue to be a big focus for the legislature in both Congress and in the state legislature. And so what will happen from a regional perspective is obviously top of mind. And kind of looking at the agenda, those were kind of the areas where we spent a lot of time. So a lot happening on the roadways, and, you know, what can we do from a congestion standpoint? So that's all I have for both A and B. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item C is a report on the Dallas College at Capel. Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my, my report is on the Dallas Council Capel location. The Capel location is 100% dedicated to construction relating to education and training. The programs that they have at the campus are three major programs, traditional college credit and non-credit courses leading to certificates, associate degrees, and transfer to university programs. Number two, workforce training in collaboration with our partner. The partner is Construction Education Foundation. They have been successful in an award of a large, approximately $3 million Skills Development Fund grant to provide training for 18 DFWs construction companies. And third project, our program, is dual-credit courses in construction management, construction technology for multiple ISDs, including some for, for, from the, or to the CS, CISD. This does not mean that they can't offer other courses out of the campus, just haven't had demand to offer other types of programs at this point. They do host numerous groups and events at the campus currently, and most of their CISD dual-credit students attend online classes or come to the main North Lake campus, which is in Irving. If there is an interest in partnering with the City of Capel on any economic development or workforce training, they're willing to sit down and talk about it.
Thank you very much. Item number 14 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, do you have any public service announcements? I do have one. I had the honor and privilege of attending the swearing-in of a new police officer for the City of Capel, and that's Officer Andrew Walker. Andrew is from upstate New York. He is a, unfortunately, a Bills fan. We were not able to, to convert him yet. He's actually a very adamant Bills fan. He's also a very small guy at about six foot five and not hard to miss in a crowd. So if you run into Andrew or Officer Walker, please welcome him to the City of Capel. He is absolutely enamored with us, and our police officers are enamored with him. So anyway, welcome a great new officer. Item number 15 is necessary action from the executive session. City Attorney Bob Hager has something to read into the record.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as a result of the executive session held earlier this evening, where you were briefed by our special counsel on a settlement agreement involving franchise fees, I would ask you to consider the following motion. It's a motion to approve a settlement agreement binding among City of Allen, that's the city that the suit was brought under, and other cities, one of which is Capel, and Spectrum Gulf Coast LLC, you may have known it as Time Warner, in cause number twenty eighteen dash thirty-eight thirty-five dash four, pending in the United States District Court for the Western District of Texas, whereby the cities have alleged the unpaid franchise fees as a result of underreporting of gross revenues. As a result of that suit, a settlement negotiation was reached with Spectrum whereby the city of Capel would receive an increase of net franchise fees in the approximate sum of forty thousand dollars over a ten-year period, as projected and presented by our attorney, and to authorize the city manager to sign the appropriate documents. And I'd be happy to elaborate if council feels the need for me to do so.
Do I have a motion? Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the item as stated by Mr. Hager.
Thank you. Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Matthew. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The time is seven fifty-eight PM. We're going to recess from regular session of the city council and move back into work session in the first floor conference room. The public is invited to join us. All right. The time is eight PM and we're, the time is eight PM. We're in work session of the Capel City Council. We're going to take item D, which is discussion regarding future median design by Mike Garson and Jessica Carpenter first. Lady and gentlemen, gentlemen, you're up.
All right, well, go ahead and get started. Good evening, Mayor and council. Mike Garson and I are here this evening to discuss median landscaping and proposed changes to our median design. So the drought conditions that we experienced and water restrictions we experienced back in twenty twenty-two will likely become, and currently, the city is the biggest consumer of water here in Capel. The city's taking steps to minimize our water usage and we're looking at areas we can conserve. Certainly, our medians are one of those areas. Tonight, we'll be specifically discussing the medians on South Beltline that are being reconstructed currently as part of the street improvement project, as well as the next upcoming project on Royal Lane. So again, we'll talk about the history of our current median design, kind of how we got to where we are in our current medians. We'll talk about how much water it takes to irrigate some of our current larger landscape medians, and then we'll talk a little bit about what we're proposing in terms of a new median design that ultimately will conserve water. So the aesthetics of our medians are really what set us apart from our neighboring communities. The current design of our medians were established back in twenty fourteen with the adoption of our Streetscape Master Plan, and this was a goal that came out of the twenty thirty plan. The Sandy Lake Road medians were landscaped initially first. They were used as our pilot, sort of our template, and then after the adoption of the plan, the medians on Denton Tap, Bethel, Parkway, and Freeport followed. Now, with the direction from the twenty forty plan, we're being informed that applying new and smart approaches to managing resources is important, and certainly, water is one of our most precious resources. So our current median landscape is beautiful, but it does take a large amount of resources to maintain. While the materials that we currently use in our medians, our native and low water use plants in and of themselves, they still require quite a bit of irrigation to take care of. So last calendar year, so in twenty twenty-two, some of our largest medians, obviously Denton Tap, we used about three point seven million gallons, Sandy Lake Road, six point seven million, I'm sorry, three point two million, and Freeport Parkway, six point seven million. So those are our largest workage of medians totaled over thirteen point eight million gallons. And so just note that Denton Tap would have been larger, would have been more downs in twenty twenty-two, but we have South Beltline offline due to the road construction projects. That's currently not being irrigated, so the Denton Tap number would have likely been been higher. So let's talk about some proposed changes. So currently, the top images are rendering from that twenty fourteen Streetscape Master Plan of what our current median design is today. So when you drive around town, these are the designs that you're seeing on those main medians that I mentioned. So we have the curvature design. We have a mix of either buffalo or Bermuda grasses and decomposed granite covering most of our ground's surface, mixed with a lot of beautiful ornamental grasses and mulch beds. Most of the plant material that we use, again, are native plants. We use a large amount of yucca and things like that, really hardy plants that do really well in drought conditions. You can see because those survived our drought conditions of last year. And then most of our existing medians, with the exception of Royal Lane, already have existing canopy trees as well that we utilize. So the bottom image is a new rendering of what South Beltline may look like if we transition over to a design with a little more hardscape and a little less turf. And at this point is where I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Garson. We'll talk a little bit more about the proposed design and water conservation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So the proposed design, this is just another image showing from a different direction of South Beltline, what it would look like with the proposed median design. So what we anticipate doing is, as we were going under construction with Beltline, we realized we have a great opportunity now to make that decision to change our mindset and our landscaping so that we can work to conserve and minimize in our water consumption, lower our consumption since we are the largest consumer of water in the city. And so with this project, like I said, now's the time that we can do this, make that change. And really, the biggest difference is, is we plan on reducing the amount of turf utilized in the medians to about fifty percent less turf than what we originally proposed for the project. We still plan on keeping some of the existing plantings that we've used on the other medians. We may reduce the amount of them and add more decomposed granite, maybe more colored concrete, stained concrete type, but, and then the decomposed granite. So that's really what we anticipate doing moving forward with the South Beltline project. So a couple of things is, again, we anticipate keeping the similar aesthetic of the plant palette in the median, the roadway. And so we would like to utilize less turf because the turf is one of the biggest users of the water. Moving forward, as we move over to Royal, that's right now, if you look at Royal, it's about thirty-five foot wide median. And so currently, it's turf and not irrigated. If we were to move forward on the existing median for that project or the existing palette for that project, it would increase the consumption of our water tremendously. And so as you can see here on the screen, our current proposed planting scheme for Beltline would be, we would use about forty-four thousand gallons per week. With the new proposed design change, it would reduce that to about twelve and a half thousand gallons per week. And so we would save a lot of water consumption as we get into those summer months when we're getting close to the peak usage and the peak demand of our water, reducing the amount in the medians would drastically help us from having to increase our water usage and our intake from DWU. And so moving forward, we would plan on moving, going to this design for South Beltline as we continue the project. And then as South, Royal Lane is currently under design, we anticipate using the same type median plant palette for that project as well. And it will reduce dramatically the amount of irrigation required and needed for those two projects. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions.
Can you go back? Yeah. Sure. The irrigation, we're going to save a lot of gallons. What about as far as maintenance wise? Is that going to be significantly reduced as well, Tim?
Yeah, so right now, all of our landscape medians in town, we spend about nineteen thousand labor hours, staff labor hours in those medians. And so that will drastically reduce. We won't know the exact realized savings until the medians are installed and in play, but certainly, we're not mowing, we're not edging, we're still going to have to lay some pre-emergent and things like that. Those weeds will still pop up through those granite beds. We'll still need to be, you know, trimming some ornamental grasses and doing litter pickup and things. So while there'll still be labor and folks in medians, they're much reduced.
Can you go back? Slide.
Are we actually going to have four lane?
No.
I just want to make sure.
They'll be at the intersection, but not, not the entire lane.
Well, as I saw that, I was like, I knew we were going to have four lanes, so.
Our artist, our artist did.
I was confused with the three and the four, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute.
See, it's the little details that get everybody off track.
Get anything passed us.
So I do have a question. I remember very clearly back in twenty fourteen when we approved the existing, you know, why didn't we go this step back then?
So back in time, yeah, back in time we adopted this plan, so we were, the water conservation issue was not as critical as it was today.
Well, that's fine. We did the zero, or we were told.
Zero scape, yes. Still zero scape, but there was a selection of still a lot of turf that was included in terms of ground cover in that no matter what, it's going to require quite a bit of irrigation. And so the new planting scheme we're proposing, it still requires irrigation. Those plants are still going to require it, the canopy trees still require that, but at least we're removing the turf, so we're going to significantly decrease that as well.
I'm going to give you an opinion, but I really like the yucca that we're putting, we have out there, and what I call a pappus grass.
Yes.
And I think both of those are relatively low water usage.
They are, they are, and then the dandelion grass as well.
Please at least consider those.
Consider first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He was first.
He was first?
Yep.
You had your hand up longer. Kevin?
It is true, you did have your hand up longer. Question on the irrigate, I know we were specifically talking about medians and in that area. Do we currently irrigate any of the sidewalk areas or is it only the medians that we irrigate?
We do have some areas.
The rightways, yes.
We do have some rightways that we do irrigate.
All right, so obviously, just looking, and I know it's just rendering and stuff, but with the, with the, you know, kind of increasing that zero scape coming through the middle there, is there any thought about doing the sidewalk areas to save on irrigation as well?
As of right now, the, along the Beltline corridor, the majority of those rightways are maintained and irrigated by the developer, the property owner.
Okay.
We don't maintain in this area, but there are some rightways throughout town that we do have irrigation in.
Okay.
But so with this one, no, we hadn't considered that.
Just thought I would ask, thank you.
So I was thinking the same thing. I remember that conversation of why we went there, but at the same time, too, it was, it was water conservation, but it was also mitigating people or preventing people from crossing the street.
Correct.
Right? And creating that pathway. I'm trying to think, South Beltline, like, do we foresee any concern issues with people crossing streets where we're doing this? Because we, we did that for a reason. It was water conservation, but it was also for safety with the type of grass and all that that we had.
And the, and the maintenance was in there as well.
Yes, yes. But I just, I just want to think through that, like.
The idea is that there's still going to be the plantings, there's going to be boulders, the large boulders that we see. I think South Freeport has some large boulders. There's still going to be trees. So it's, it's still going to have the uninvited appeal to it.
Right, right.
It's just going to be.
Are you reducing the number of trees?
No.
Okay.
What's the cost of granite bed per square feet?
So there is a, there is a higher upfront cost for decomposed granite versus turf. It's probably double the cost of the per square foot cost for turf, but the long-term maintenance of it is less.
So how many square feet do we need for this project?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I, I do know, we just went through this for South Royal Lane, and for Royal Lane, I believe it was.
So South Beltline, I have it in linear feet, sixty-nine hundred linear feet.
Yeah. And each median is broken up, so we'd have, we'd have to figure that out, but, and we can get that cost for you, the difference.
Mark?
I have a couple of questions. So we have a certain amount of budget, obviously, for the current design. We're going to be cutting back on plant material, increasing decomposed granite. Or is that going to end up costing us more money upfront just in to save money in the long term?
We get, more than likely, we're working out the, we're getting costs right now because there's going to be savings on irrigation because we're not going to have as many zones. So initial thoughts, it may be a wash, but there may be a slightly higher cost because of the granite, but we're still getting costs back right now on those.
Okay. Next question. Do we have smart meters at every location?
Yes.
Okay. And it's tied to rain gauges locally or is it to like DFW weather?
I have deferred to.
Each, each median should have its own, each zone, irrigation zone should have its own rain gauge.
Okay, okay, good. And then you talked about possibly doing more concrete. That's going to increase our impervious area and, which is going to impact the heat island effect. So I'm a little bit concerned about that.
Right.
I mean, how much, how much of an increase in impervious coverage do you think we're going to be doing percentage wise?
Well, so the, the additional concrete is really just at the, mostly the median noses. So there's, yeah, there's, right now, they're stamped concrete anyway, and so the option would be the decomposed granite or colored concrete. I think decomposed granite right now is the preferred method, but, so we don't have to go with any additional concrete instead of decomposed or instead of the turf areas. It was just another option that aesthetically you can color and stain concrete to make it look.
And, you know, not a landscape architect, but I was under the impression that buffalo grass had super deep roots and it required virtually just whatever water you, or rain you got in the summertime to survive.
I have to defer to.
Anybody?
It, it does. It still requires irrigation.
Some.
Yeah. And that's why that number up there is higher because we have the vast amount of buffalo grass from like Rimita One to Sandy Lake.
Yeah.
There's some wire medians there, continued buffalo grass. We still have to water irrigate twice a week.
Right.
Especially in the heat in the summer.
I know Long, landscape guys tell me the same thing. Put in buffalo grass, you don't have to worry about it. All right. Anybody else? Dom?
Well, I don't know if I have a question as much as, I'm going to play devil's advocate. I'm a little bit concerned, like Mark stated, of outlining our concrete with concrete and just going more hard surfaces in town. We already live in a suburban, urban area. So this is really the best, I guess the question, my question is going to be, is it really the best alternative instead of going with some other natural, I don't know about zero scape, I don't, I'm not a landscape guy, but, you know, something that uses less water, I get that, I understand that, but not just putting more concrete in.
it look...
And, you know, not a landscape architect, but I was given the impression that buffalo grass had super deep roots and it required virtually just whatever water or rain you got in the summertime to survive.
Have to defer.
Or defer to the...
Anybody?
It does, it still requires irrigation.
Some.
Yeah. And that's why that number of people is higher, because we have the vast amount of buffalo grass from, like, Bermuda One to Sandy Lake.
Yeah.
There's some wider medians there, continued buffalo grass. We still have to more irrigate twice a week.
Right.
Especially in the heat in the summer.
Come on.
I know the long landscape guys tell me the same thing. Put in buffalo grass, you don't have to worry about it. All right, anybody else? Don?
Well, I don't know if I have a question as much as, I'm going to play devil's advocate. I'm a little bit concerned, like Mark stated, of outlining our concrete, what's called concrete, and just going more hard surfaces in town. We already live in a suburban, urban area, so this is really the best, I guess the question, my question is going to be, is it really the best alternative instead of going with some other natural, I don't know about zero scape, I'm not enough of a landscape guy, but, you know, something that uses less water, I get that, I understand that, but not just putting more concrete in.
Well, I think the decomposed granite is the next best option that's still, it's impervious, and so...
Right, and just to keep it with fitting in with our similar aesthetic, we already use so much decomposed granite as a ground surface now, so it's not a stretch to say we're just going to increase the decomposed granite. If we chose some other surface, it just wouldn't be cohesive with the aesthetic of the rest of the community. But yeah, I think decomposed granite is still going to be our best option, but I think it's still going to be broken up nicely with all of the same plantings, so I know the plantings here look small, and you know, once those have been in tenure, like they have now, they're, the grasses, like the mayor mentioned, are nice and rooted in and grown and fluffy and big, and so I think it'll, it'll still look very, very nice.
Well, can I ask a silly question? And the decomposed granite, so how does that, so is it like a, that's not a hard surface? Is that right? I guess I need definition of what that is.
Gravel.
It's just gravel?
It's like, yeah.
Crushed gravel.
Crushed granite.
Crushed granite.
So it's not like a sidewalk or anything?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not impervious, so water, water's going to...
Water goes right down.
Okay, and I guess, I guess it'll still look okay? I mean, I...
It will, so it's going to be definitely a modern aesthetic, but it's, I think it's going to blend nicely, it's going to, it's going to follow the same curvature design that the rest of our medians follow with the similar plantings and similar ground cover, so you're just going to see the difference.
Okay, I guess I'm probably biased, because I like the green on the outside a lot more than the earth surface in the middle, but, so, all right.
Anything else? Mr. Land, you get a vote?
No, it's not, it's just a question. When you say anything else, we just need to know, do we have a green light to move this way, or keep doing what we're doing?
Got a thumbs up from the corner down there. Thumbs up over on the other side, and that's a thumbs up. Mark, you got concerns?
Yeah.
Just kind of losing the softness. I mean, if we can find any kind of planting, even cactus, you know, from the desert, they're subject to extreme weather conditions, both hot and cold.
And they'll keep people from...
And that would keep people...
There you go. It is as much greener as we can have without being...
Jessica is antsy to talk behind you.
Yes.
So something, definitely we can look at, cacti currently is not in our plant palette at all, but we, that's something that we can look at adding. But I think, what I think you're referring to is, I think that the plantings that are shown in the rendering are not necessarily green plantings, and I think that we would make every effort to increase the green plant material as much as possible. I think it's just not reflecting well in this rendering.
I was going to say knockout roses, but I don't think that's what this intended to mean.
Okay.
We could make it smaller at Fourth Lane.
Me, about this one.
Do you all have stomach to handle item B, the selection of mayor protem? All right.
We're here, you know, it's...
Might as well, you kept us this long.
All right, so the first two paragraphs, I try, the first paragraph came out of our section 3.5 of the charter. The next paragraph was my interpretation of what we had been doing, and then the hardest part was trying to come up with the term of who has gone the longest time since last serving as mayor protem. I had the least longest amount of time and the longest least amount of time, but Mike helped out with that.
The longest least.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was that bad. Interestingly, the current order of the mayor protem, as we currently sit, is current mayor protem is Bijou, John would be next, and Kevin, Don, and then Cliff, Mark, and Brianna. After, after the May 20 election, the order's not going to change, which is kind of a, I was, that was unusual. So the order won't change after the election. That's usually when you see a change. The one thing I wanted to bring up was what we do on succession planning, and it really comes down to that. And Mark had sent me a very pointed note, and I wanted to discuss. Kevin has given me some input, which is different than yours and different than what I was thinking. So my opinion, and this is based on what happened some years ago when Bob Maholic was thrust into the position of acting mayor, he admits that that was not fair to him or the city, and he was, I never had even thought of it, but he said he was woefully ill-prepared to assume the role and take that for what it is. Now, that was an extremely unusual situation. I'm not planning on going anywhere, but then, you know, the unforeseen can happen. So I just wanted to bring that up for conversation, and it's not critical that we do anything with it. We don't have to make a decision on it. That's, that's absolutely one of those things, it's just a, an understanding with this council and, you know, next, wow, shoot, in six weeks, it could change. We'll have a new member sitting here.
It could, it will.
So...
Oh, we will.
We will have, and I'm assuming part of your argument, I'll let you speak, but, you know, it's not that by mandate that an elected mayor has to have city council experience, so you could, the citizens could elect a mayor that has never had any city council experience, and I'm not going to, that's an absolutely true statement.
Yeah, I don't think we need to change the process that we currently have. You know, staff is not going to let a mayor protem who has to take over fail. I mean, you know, there's enough continuity there that I think someone who's got less than a year and a half experience could certainly, you know...
No, Bob said he was not able, but...
How long was he on council when he took over? Does he remember?
He's just been elected.
I think so.
Yeah.
Like, are you saying less than six months?
Like a few months.
Okay.
Because he was elected in May and...
July.
I'm sorry, July?
No, he was elected in May.
No, May. He was elected in May?
July's one.
And that happened in July, so, okay, right, so here.
No, three months.
Oh, May, June, July, that's right, sorry, I'm thinking, it's been a long, yes, it's May, July, you're right, because then all of a sudden, yeah, that, and then that then...
Kevin, Kevin, you had some ideas on this topic.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating for a change, I just felt like I should just kind of get this out there, is that, you know, to me, the mayor role is such a, it has such different responsibilities than a council member role. You know, there's the, kind of the PR side, there's the, you know, the public appearance side, there's, there's that piece of it, and I know that, you know, some of us, we are council members, and maybe, you know, we can't handle getting to some of those meetings or appearances or something like that because of job situations and things like that, so, again, not advocating for a change, but I think it's just something to consider that, you know, I know that there's a rotation and things like that, and John, I don't want you to think I'm trying to like change the rotation or anything like that, but for sure, well, no, but like, no, but like, I mean, is it something, I don't know if this council in the past has ever entertained, like, you know, I know that we've talked about, you know, we vote, but we vote based on this rotation, so is it, should we consider someone who could handle the, you know, the responsibilities of assuming the role of mayor, or maybe who, I don't, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, you know, so I think some of us have more ability to do those kind of roles than other people, you know, or have the time and the freedom to be able to do some of that stuff. So just a thought, and just a discussion.
Brianna?
Well, I mean, the, the way we've been doing it is a way that has been working and for many years, and I hear what you're saying, and I think that if the person who's next in line doesn't feel like they're capable or in a position to do it, then they should be, they have the opportunity to decline, rather than us make that decision, because then it, and then it becomes more of like a popularity contest, and I just don't want to be that, and then if people are going to serve as mayor protem, then they know that they're going to have to make concessions. And one of the things we've always done over the years, which I really appreciated, is the fact that it's not about, oh, well, you're mayor protem and only you can go, but hey, if John's next and he's not able to make it somewhere, he's like, hey, Kevin, do you mind going, or Bijou, or somebody else? Like, we've always been collaborative about that, but I'm one that, I don't like to fix things that aren't broken, and so I like it the way it is.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to have the discussion.
No, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate what you're saying and wherever.
That's exactly what I told Kevin last time, that someone always goes in if you...
Absolutely.
Hey, Mayor, we're just soliciting feedback, so I figured I would just shoot feedback out there, but, you know, I mean, you guys have been on council way longer than I have, so you've seen this process work, and so...
And you know what's interesting, in like, the amount of time that I've been on, yeah, like, I've only been mayor protem twice in 16 years.
Mark, are you quiet over there?
No, Mark was mayor protem for two...
I remember that, I remember that, yeah.
I think Cliff said they put up with this for two years.
Yeah, but...
So Cliff gets to claim the largest number of votes in a popular election, and you get to claim the longest tenure as mayor protem. How about that?
Yeah, I agree. Wait, how many, what was your number, or what was your percentage?
What, the, I don't know. He got the number.
That's right, that's right, you are...
He got 550.
Look at you!
All right, well, listen, Don?
Okay.
I don't really, with the exception of the fact that I had to work harder to get elected than Kevin, and...
Outrage, I will not stand for this.
But I don't have a problem with the way we're doing it now, and I hate to, I hate to write it and get it, put it, sort of put it in writing, I'd rather be sort of at the will of the council still, but if we want to rotate it like we have, I think I'm fine with that also, I mean, it's...
I just want to read the list, John, Kevin, Don.
Well, if you want to get into debate about, you know, your runoff, I'll let you go talk to Gary Roden about that.
I was talking about Kevin.
No, I'll let you go talk to Gary Roden about it. He made me suffer behind him for nine years. All right.
So Kevin, you'll be mayor protem in two years, he'll be here before you know it.
Feedback has been received, thank you very much. No action item necessary. The time is 8:20, let's just call it 8:30, and we are recessed from the work session and will rejoin the city council to adjourn. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is 8:30 PM. We have recessed from work session, and we are rejoining Copel City Council. There being no further business before this body, we are adjourned at 8:30 PM.
Good job, Mayor. We'll see you next time. Take care, Joe.
You, too.
All right, sir.